Call this meeting of the Westland City Council order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Andrea Rukowski.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call. Councilman Gabow.
President.
Councilman Hersberg. Pro Tem Londell.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
Accord Miss President.
Thank you. Begin with announcements and presentations. We'll begin with Vic Barr in the Wayne Westland School District.
Greetings, Council. We're here again to celebrate the compassionate efforts of our young people in our community. As many of you know, Mayor Wild had us reach out to Dr. John Dignan, who's with me here today, to talk about compassion and how we could drive that process down throughout our youngest population and get them involved in the process. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Dignan, and he's going to introduce Adrian Nathan, I believe.
Yes.
So here you go, John.
Good evening, Council. Again, I want to thank the City of Westland, Mayor Wild, and the City Council, because again, this Compassionate Project came about as a thought, and the man behind me played a big part in that. I also would like to thank the Compassionate City Committee and also MGAR Theaters because of their donation. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Adrian Nathan, but before I do, I want to thank Ms. Kimberly May, one of our board members that's here this evening, as well as Dr. Jim Anderson, the Wayne Memorial Principal, and Eric McCullough, the John Glenn Principal. Also, Kerry Thompson, who, in my opinion, is one of the greatest educators I've ever been around. He leads our Fire Academy, and one of our students is being honored there this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Nathan.
Come on up this way.
Okay. Oh, oh, it's like being on the stage. It is. Good afternoon, Council President. I'm also a member of the Council of Westland Community, family and friends. I'm Adrian Nathan. I am the Director, Second Director for Wayne Westland Community Schools. And let me put this here so I can clearly communicate. We have some distinguished students that we would like to recognize that we need to acknowledge.
Vic.
Two significant students.
Check the trigger, it might be off.
Oh, glad you can't hear me. Sorry. I get to start all the way over from there.
Give it a second. There we are. All right, start all over again.
Thank you. Hello. Happy Spring. Can you hear me now? Yes. My name is Adrian Nathan. I am here to honor and a few of our distinguished students who won the Compassion Project. They were nominated by teachers and/or students. And the first one we are going to honor is Justine Peterson. She is a student nominated from Career Tech, William D. Ford Career Technical Center. Attending with her today is her family, who is going to wave right now. Hi. Okay. And Mr. Thompson, and her random act of kindness is the best part. Huh? Oh, please come up here, Justine. Thank you. This is my first time. It takes a village. Let's clap for her. Justine is kind every day. She is such a great person. She picks up after other students when necessary and helps keep her classroom tidy. She also makes sure she sprays down every surface in the classroom to keep us all safe and healthy. She helps sort, organize, and store our equipment, and she's such a big help. She's a great example of kindness and respect and helpful to others. She does this every day since the beginning of the year. Justine works very hard in her class, too, and a student even said, "Justine helps me study for my test," even though she had to study for hers, too. Justine embodies our William D. Ford Career Technical Center PBIS expectations of being safe, respectable, responsible, and engaged. Plato's famous quote says, "Kindness is more than just good deeds. It is an attitude, an expression, a look. It's anything that lifts another human." Justine is a great example of this kindness and respect. She does good deeds every day. She is relentless, positive person, and she has inspired her classmates and instructors throughout the year. She embodies the firefighter spirit of leading with kindness in every interaction. We could not think of any one more deserving. You get to stay up here, Justine. All right. We would like to acknowledge Dr. James Anderson, the Principal of Wayne Memorial High School, and his nominee, which is Nicholas Collins. Come on up here. Nicholas graciously found a phone and turned it into his teacher. He also offers food to other students in class and does a wonderful job at helping students understand difficult concepts. We have a letter from your teacher, Ms. Armstrong, that reads, "From the first day of school, I could tell Nicholas, affectionately called Nick, cared about learning in my class. He's always involved and participates often. What makes Nick special is the caring attitude and his honesty. I have witnessed him several times through the course of the year, helping other students by explaining difficult concepts and checking for understanding. In the first semester, an incident happened which made Nick stand out. The class was playing a game, and Nick was losing the game at first to a fellow student." Do you know where this story's going, Nick? All right, okay. So Nick was playing a game with a student, and he was losing. And just with a few seconds to go, the fellow student's phone died. They were playing a game on the phone. And then the fellow student, his battery went dead, and Nick ended up winning. And when Nick got the reward of two golden tickets he won for winning the game, he gave them to the other student and said that he deserved to win because he would have won if his phone hadn't died. That was special. There have been many other small instances I've noticed about Nick, but they're so commonplace with him, I'm having a hard time recalling them all. Needless to say, I think highly of his character. Having Nick as a student this year has been a pleasure, and he has made me a better teacher in the process. Let's congratulate Nick. Our last, but not least, is Brianna Robb. She is our Compassion Project winner from John Glenn High School, and her random act of kindness was Brianna helped a student with special needs get equipment out to play basketball when no one else offered to. She also got a student who never really felt comfortable participating to actually play volleyball. During her time at John Glenn, Brianna has become a true leader. Even in the tough times, she's always had a smile on her face and knows how to make others smile. Brianna leads by example and is always looking out for others. The effects of her leadership will have an impact on John Glenn for many years to come. Let's congratulate Brianna Robb.
Okay, well, welcome, students, and thank you for your compassionate efforts at school and in our community. Council Pro Tem Londo, come on down. Deputy Mayor Ready, please come on down, and City Clerk Richard LeBlanc. They have something for you. Pick your student. Okay, on behalf of the administration, Mayor Wild, and the entire City Council, welcome and congratulations on your reward, and keep up the good work out there. So we'll get some pictures now. All right, Dr. Dignan would like... All right, real quick, Dr. Dignan would like to address the crowd and families. We'll get some additional pictures out in the lobby area so the council can get on with the city's business.
Again, I just want to thank the City of Westland and congratulate our winners. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, really internally, Amanda Divas, who's been the backbone of our efforts internally, collecting winners and everything. Amanda, if you'd raise your hand, and if we could give her a round of applause. Thanks again. I'll turn her back over.
Thank you. We'll let everybody filter out real quick. Then our next presentation will come from Paul Motz, our Youth Assistance Director. Paul?
Hi there. Good evening, Council President, City Council. Deputy Mayor Ready, thank you for a few minutes this evening so I can promote an upcoming Westland Youth Assistance new mentor training. So tonight, we got to see some special people ahead of us, and that's what we're looking for, too, to become mentors. A lot of kids in our community do need additional help and support. They need people that are dependable and kind and reliable. You don't have to be a perfect person to be a perfect mentor. So this is something that's definitive. It shows, and statistics show, that if a young person has one responsible adult in their life that they can confide in and share with, it can lift them up from making a poor decision to making great decisions for themselves. So our mentor training's going to be held in April, and it's going to be a five-night, three-hour training each night, so a total of 15, I say 16 hours, because there's a couple nights that get out late. Dinner is provided. There is no obligation to become a mentor, even if you go to all the classes, which we'd love it if you did. Our mentors learn a lot about themselves. This is a pretty interactive training. I notice our Councilman Pro Tem is nodding because he's participated in this before. But it's interactive. You learn about some of the best ways to help support a youth. So, and I'm going to tell you this now, and I don't think it's a secret to our people at home, but there are a lot of kids that have struggled and are continuing to struggle. Our office is receiving more and more calls from young people who are having trouble at school, maybe trouble with relationships at home, sometimes even difficulty in the community. But this is why this program is here. Youth Assistance has been around, probably closing in on about 30 years, I'm guessing. Probably maybe 28. I'm exaggerating. But we're here to support kids and to try to keep them from going any further into the juvenile justice system. And so when our families come to us for help and want help with their young people, I want to answer that call. And right now, we need more mentors. So the quicker we can get a match, more the relationship. It's good for us to have too many mentors so we can kind of do more effective matches. So if, and I'm not expecting you guys to be mentors, but I know you know a lot of people. And with our audience at home watching and our audience here, you know, we talk a lot about how important our kids are, and so this is a chance to give it a try and learn more and hopefully help a young person. So thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you, Paul.
Did I say the dates?
April.
Okay, well, I'm going to be more specific. April 5th, 6th, and 7th, 13th, and 14th. So it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday. Dinner is provided. We spare no expense, so it's going to be good stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. All right, we'll move to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion in support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Sir?
Richard Graham from Westland, and with Move Westland Forward. Regarding Item 5 on New Business and the Proposed Dairy Queen Restaurant on the southwest corner of Newburgh and Ford, this is a great addition to our community and wish the owners great success. Regarding Item F and a Letter of Intent by Lombardo Homes for 23 homes at the old Hawthorne Valley site, looks to be around 16 acres for $750,000. Hopefully, and finally, something is done with the deplorable city property that has been a safety concern, along with a city dumping site for contaminated sewer materials. Regarding Item E on the Consent Calendar and the Sale of 3 Acres for Only $40,000. This is north of Orin along Newburgh. This is interesting because the city purchased this in 2021 for over $37,000, but is selling it to Lulu Investments, Mr. Hamadi, for what appears to be an ultra-low cost compared to the Hawthorne Valley property, which is in pretty bad shape. Through the chair to whoever can answer, was this property bid out? Was there a for-sale sign placed at this location? Basically, how this come about for such a low cost, which the city did not even cover their holding costs and administration fees? What is also interesting is Mr. Hamadi has given thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in campaign contributions to various Team Wild members, including Mayor Wild, Councilman Hart, and Councilman Gabow. So basically, we'd like clarity for what happened, what appears to be an ultra-low cost. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? All right, we'll close comments on the agenda and move into the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Support.
I have a motion by Councilman McDermott, supported... Excuse me, thank you. Councilman Gabow, supported by Councilwoman Sampson. We had a question on Item E. Do we have an answer?
Through the chair. Is that working?
Nope. We're going to just turn all these on and see if we get you. There we are.
Through the chair? All right. So it's kind of a compound question there. No, there was not a for-sale sign put up. The city is not able to make a profit off of properties that we pick up off of the tax foreclosure list, so we are limited to sell the property basically for whatever cost we have into it, which is, as you mentioned, kind of our administrative costs, which we tacked on to the value of the property, which we did get for $37,000. Obviously, Mr. Hamadi is the adjacent property owner. The property that he is purchasing shares access with his existing site, so the Property Disposition Committee met and kind of determined that it made sense for, you know, him to be the buyer on this property.
Thank you. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. I'd like to move Items E and F to New Business for discussion.
There's a motion to move Items E and F.
I'll support that.
Supported by Councilwoman Sampson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Signal dissent, items are moved, going back to the consent calendar. Are there any changes? Are there any changes? Is there any dissent? Is there any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held March 7, 2022. Approval of bid for exterior and interior gym painting services. Administration recommended the low bidder, Custom Creations Painting, total cost not to exceed $24,900. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign a contract approved by the city attorney. Approval of web hosting services proposal with Civic Plus LLC for professional web hosting services. Terms shall be for a one-year period with the annual fee of $16,534.66. Approval of purchase of a 2022 Ford Lightning pickup truck for the police department. Total amount not to exceed $54,669. Adoption of Land Division Resolution, southwest corner of Ford Road in Newburgh. This was planning department number 2196F. The land division was approved by City Council on March 7, 2022. Approval of proposed golf course fee schedule changes. Then the last item approved by council today. Adoption of prepared resolution to proclaim April 2022 as Autism Awareness Month in the City of Westland. Moving to New Business. Item 1, request for City Council to enter into a closed study session immediately to discuss the Hickman versus City of Westland claim and settlement with council pursuant to the Open Meetings Act exemption, MCL 15.2681E and H.
So moved.
Support.
So motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman McDermott. Roll call. Councilman Gabow.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We are in temporary recess at 7:21. All right, Councilmember, return to the meeting. Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Londo. Roll call.
Councilman Gabow.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We're back in session at 7:27 PM. New Business, Item 3, Approval of Council Recommendation to Globally Resolve the Hickman Lawsuit Upon Execution of All Necessary Paperwork and Court Filings.
Support. Motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Londo. Roll call.
Councilman Gabow.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New Business, Item 3A. Approval of Purchase Agreement from Lulu's Investments LLC for parcel number 560300008 in the amount of $40,000. On February 14, 2022, the Property Disposition Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by Councilman Londo. Supported by Councilman Gabow. Is there a discussion? Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions through the chair to Planning. If it's in here, I didn't see it. What's the current zoning of the property?
For the Newburgh and Warren property, that is CB3, general commercial.
And do we know what the intended use of the property is going to be?
The property is mostly made up of wetland areas. I'm not sure of the percentage, so it is not really usable, and that is one of the reasons why it's up on your agenda today to provide it back to the property owner of Aubrey's.
Thank you, Mo. And then through the chair to Finance. Who made the decision to buy the property and what part of the budget did the money come out of for that? Was that CDPG or...?
Aubrey Berman, answer that question.
Through the chair. So I don't know which part of the budget it came out of, off the top of my head, but it was kind of a discussion, you know, every year when the tax foreclosure list comes up, we take a look, you know, if there's any, you know, properties that look like they may be viable, then, you know, we consider picking them up from the first right of refusal. The access for Aubrey's, you know, Mr. Hamadi had an agreement with the previous owners where his access on Newburgh is actually on that property, and then they defaulted on their taxes. So obviously, if somebody else came along and picked that property up, it would cause, you know, could cause some issues for the Aubrey's property, for people to be able to access that restaurant. So that definitely, you know, weighed into our determination of kind of, you know, trying to make sure that we could control, you know, what the future intention would be of that land. But as Mo stated, it's really probably not developable. It's significantly wet.
Okay, so your department handled that, the purchase of the property?
It was a collaboration between Planning, Community Development, and my department, the Property Disposition Committee, kind of everybody was involved.
All right. I appreciate your answers for that. That'll be it for now.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman McDermott?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Roll call.
Councilman Gabow.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampson.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business, Item 3B. Approval of Letter of Intent from CP Holding LLC to purchase the former Hawthorne Valley property in the amount of $750,000. On February 14, 2022, the Property Disposition Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Motion by Councilman Gabow, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there a discussion? Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you, Council President. You know, this one's been going on for so many years, I don't even know how many years, but it looks like we're finally going to get a decent price for the property if we do sell it. I understand this is only a letter of intent right now, but, you know, I would ask council to postpone it until the first meeting next month, just for further review. I think we should really be looking at other options. The property wasn't marketed. There was a proposal to do homes there, was the last one approved. They couldn't sell any homes, and the property came back under the city's control. And I'm not sure if any of you have been out there. It's an old golf course, and it's a really nice place in the parkland, and it's not buildable down there, but it would be usable for a nice park. And somebody just said to me the other day, you know, "We have nothing in Westland that's like the Henry Ford Estate," or something like that. So I would just ask council to just give this two weeks. It is a good deal, if everybody agrees, but I don't want to see the property landlocked and then not be usable at all. I'd like to take each council member down there, if you're willing, and just share some ideas and some thoughts on what could be possible down there. Again, we should really market it to see what other options would be besides housing. would be besides housing. Um, so, that's about it. That's about all I can say right now. Um, I'll make a motion to postpone until the first meeting next month.
So, motion to postpone till next scheduled council meeting. Is there support? Is there support? Motion dies due to lack of support. Back to the underlying motion. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other? Councilwoman Sampey?
Um, I guess through the chair to either Aubrey or Mo, I'm not sure who can answer this. Has there been any other, I mean, before we, I mean, this is a good point that Councilman Hersberg brings up, but before we kind of reject offers or start to pass things along, has there been any interest from other parties before we just start throwing things out and deciding that we're not gonna move forward? Have Aubrey, have you, you know, through the chair, through, to Aubrey, have you gotten any interest from anyone else? I mean, to me, it seems like this is a really good opportunity, and to bring homes into the city is always a huge plus.
Yes. So, I'm not sure if you mean have we gotten any other residential interest or if we've gotten any other types of interest. I think maybe, um, Councilman Hersberg was, was referring to different, uh, users. Um, so, we have had a number of meetings over the years with interested people on the site. Majority of them, uh, what has tended to happen is that they're very interested, but once they start any kind of initial due diligence at the, on the site, they realize that it's too expensive to clean up the site, to demo the buildings, to do all of that work. For residential home buyer, or home builders in particular, the site is challenging. So, while it's sixteen point something acres, really only about five-point-five of that is buildable, which is, makes it extremely limited to the number of units that you can fit on the site. And any residential builder, it's all about how many units you can fit to maximize your profit, right? And while still building a nice development. Lombardo Homes is already in Westland. They're, they've just finished Marley Woods. They're working on Madison. They're working on Kettering. And so, because their resources are here, it makes sense for them financially to kind of tack this project on while they're already, you know, they can utilize the resources that they've already expended to Westland. So, it definitely sweetens it for them and makes it a little bit more attractive than another, uh, potential home builder. So, I hope that answers your question. Is to kind of, we have, you know, we have had those discussions, but it's ki, it's a challenging site. You know, it's not, it's not, um, it is beautiful. You know, it's got some, I think it's gonna be a great development, but, uh, in the long run, you know, it's, it's a difficult, kind of, trying to check all the boxes for somebody so that they can make a profit, unfortunately.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it seems most, most likely that a home in housing development would be most, uh, applicable for this land. So, thank you, Aubrey, for addressing that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? I apologize. Uh, Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. Yeah, just to tee off, um, Councilwoman Sampey's comments, um, we, a lot of the proposals that came forward, they were looking at having to demo the buildings. But according to emails we got, the property's gonna be cleaned up and all the buildings will be demolished by the end of May. So, we haven't, um, we haven't marketed it, just the property, without the buildings on it, the property as being already cleaned up. Um, I think we should do that. Um, and again, this, this company, they're doing Kettering and Madison. Um, they're starting on one of the schools maybe this year, finishing next year, doing another school after that. So, I, I mean, it could be four or five years before anything happens on this property. Uh, that, that's a lot of time. Things change, and that's a lot of time, uh, to market the property and see what else we can get. And again, um, you know, it's a huge, the wetlands is a huge area down there that I, I believe the city could use as a park or something else, a park with a, uh, development in front of it. Um, I just, I don't want to see, uh, the park landlocked, and then we're just throwing away the future and usability of, of that, the entire area. So, uh, I won't be supporting this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilman McDermott?
Thank you, Council President. Um, through the chair to Aubrey. Um, just a quick question in regards to, obviously, there's the main building there for Hawthorne Valley and some of the smaller homes to the side that are gonna be part of demolition. Are we or is Lombardo doing anything with like the bridge that is behind that? Because obviously, once we get a subdivision in there, we, kids are gonna be going back to the wetlands and using that to making it, you know, usable and safe for families and people who want to go back there.
Through the chairs. So, I, I don't think that there's a one-hundred percent definitive answer on that right now, but I can tell you where we're at in those discussions currently. The other side of the bridge, the east side of the property, there was found to be a significant amount of contamination. Um, it's likely that when it was a golf course, operational, that they used certain, um, you know, sprays and insecticides and things like that that had mercury in them. Um, and so, what would most likely happen is Lombardo will probably have to, or we would, as a part of this demo project, demolish those bridges to actually restrict that access because it's not buildable. There is a contamination concern. The remediation would be astronomically expensive, most likely to do that. It's probably pretty, um, severe all over the, you know, the prior golf course area. So, that's kind of where we're looking now. Um, if you can, you'll see in the purchase or the LOI that, um, our agreement was basically to remediate the other side of the river. So, Lombardo could say, you know, that they want to clean that up to make it an amenity for their development down the road. I'd say it's unlikely because it would likely be extremely expensive to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? No. Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. Uh, yeah, we've been dealing with this property for a number of years, since actually we acquired it from the county. Um, the, uh, there's been multiple different developments that have been proposed. Uh, one of them was a, that, somebody wanted us to donate the land so that they could put in an art, uh, community. Uh, there was a storage, uh, place that wanted to go in on that site. There was a subdivision that, and all of these have, have put in money, uh, or paid for the property and, uh, at, at some point in time or had options on the property to do that. There was also a different single-family home development. Then there was the, the group home concept, uh, development that was gonna go on that site. Uh, and, uh, quite frankly, Lombardo has proven themselves to be, uh, a, a good company to, to work with. That they're, they build a, a very fine product. Their houses sell very quickly. Um, and, uh, the, this offer is more than what we've seen in the past for the property. So, uh, I'm gonna be supporting it. I think it's a great use of the property. It, it brings in some more homes and, uh, it takes it, uh, puts it back on the tax rolls for the, for the city.
Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? All right. Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. Um, so, it was mentioned that there was contamination, and then basically the plan is to just demolish the bridges and leave it? I don't see how that's allowable. I think that's a terrible thing to say. Um, if there is any contamination down there, it should be cleaned up. Um, just, just sealing it off and leaving it, I can't, I cannot support that. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampey.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item four. Set public hearing date for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant and Home Annual Plan. A suggested public hearing date of April eighteen, two thousand twenty-two is offered.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Godbout. Is there a discussion? Is there a discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. New business.
Item five. Approval of site plan for proposed Dairy Queen Drive-Thru Restaurant, three-seven-six-zero-one Ford Road, southwest corner of Ford and Newburgh. This is planning department number two-one-nine-six-G. The planning commission recommends approval of the proposed site plan for a Dairy Queen Drive-Thru Restaurant.
So moved.
So, motion by Councilman Londo. I heard support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Uh, Mo?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, the subject property here is located at the southwest corner of Ford Road in Newburgh and is owned PUD. The parcel that we're discussing tonight is outlined in red. There was a previous land division that was approved by you at the previous meeting. Uh, tonight, the applicant is moving forward the site plan to develop and construct a approximately three-thousand square foot building for a Dairy Queen Drive-Thru Restaurant. Uh, again, if approved tonight, the existing Dairy Queen located on the north side of Ford Road at thirty-six-five-twenty Ford Road will be relocated to this location to provide a larger building and a drive-thru operation. Uh, site access for this site is provided by a full-service driveway at Ford Road, um, that will be located on the Tommy's Car Wash, uh, site that was previously approved by city council, and access easement is being granted by the, uh, Tommy's Car Wash owner, property owner, uh, to the Dairy Queen for the use of this, uh, existing drive. There's also, uh, an existing drive down here. It's off the site plan, uh, but that does provide a connection to, uh, Newburgh as well, which will be utilized by patrons of this Dairy Queen. There are twenty-one, uh, off-street parking spaces that are required for this development based on the size of the building, uh, and the site contains forty off-street parking spaces in compliance with the codes. Uh, the developer's also proposing to install some parking, uh, I'm sorry, bicycle parking in this location over here with a crosswalk identified on, uh, while using paint on the asphalt, uh, in that location where my cursor is on the screen. Uh, a loading zone's provided. There's eight stacking spaces that are required and fourteen that are being provided. Uh, the proposed building will be constructed primarily using brick and stone materials, uh, accent materials such as aluminum paneling and metal paneling, uh, will be provided, but making, uh, a small percentage of the building facades. Site contains screening and landscaping throughout the street frontage, uh, along Ford Road and parking areas, which is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. Uh, there's a twenty-foot landscaping buffer along Ford Road, which, uh, contains a decorated fence consistent with DDA standards that you've seen along Ford Road. Uh, and the hours of operation for the drive-thru restaurant are ten AM through eleven PM. The administration and planning commission are recommending approval. Uh, I know the Dairy Queen owner is here in the audience tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The petitioner's here? Please, come on up. Please tell us what Mo hasn't told us.
Uh, well, uh, first I'd say today's the first day of spring. Um, what we do at Dairy Queen is it's a benefit for Children's Miracle Network, and, uh, you come into our store before nine o'clock and pick it out. Uh, you can, uh, have a free ice cream cone, dip it for a dollar, and we donate the proceeds for today.
So, are there any questions? Any questions for the petitioner?
I do.
You do? Councilwoman Rakowski. Oh, yeah. Did you?
Just briefly.
Sorry. Councilman Londo, I apologize.
Good evening, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for the reinvestment.
Oh, you got me? Gotcha.
Thank you so much for the reinvestment in the community. We're really, really, really excited to have you, um, continue to be in Westland. I know the, the Ford location, Ford Road location in the Kroger does really, really well, but we're really excited to see you, uh, on that corner. There's gonna be a lot of activity on that corner with the car wash and a lot of other things coming, so, uh, I wish you the best of luck. I'm gonna be in full support.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski?
Oh, I turned it right back off. I'm sorry. Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. Um, I'm really looking forward to it as well. I think you're, the spec drawing is beautiful. It's gonna add a lot of interest to that corner. Um, I was just curious if you could give us a timeline about when you're, um, looking to break ground and when we might possibly see this as a functional, um, restaurant?
Uh, we've negotiated with, our, our current lease hold expires in July at the Kroger Center. Um, we've extended, uh, lease through December. We're hoping to, if everything goes to plan, open, uh, by the end of October, beginning of November.
How wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Is there any other comments from Councilwoman Sampey?
Um, well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And I just also wanted to say thank you, too. It's really great to see when businesses that are in Westland and they just relocate to expand. So, it's always a huge plus. I just wanted to say thank you for your recommitment to the city, and I agree with Councilwoman Rakowski. The plans are beautiful. Um, we, we were able to see the spec drawings and such, too. So, it's really exciting that you have that in your forefront, and I also will be supporting you this evening.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments from council? Councilman McDermott?
I just wanted to join everybody up here in saying thank you. Just, uh, you know, bigger location to go get more Blizzard cakes and enjoy those. So, thank you for your reinvestment here in the City of Westland. That corner there, where the car wash is going with the old Feister RV was, has, you know, been sitting empty for a couple of years. So, it's nice to see some redevelopment and reinvestment. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Well, I just want to add, I'm looking forward to it, too. So, uh, I mean, everybody else is, so am I. Um, again, that corner's, uh, definitely needs some work, and I, I think between you and the car wash, it's really gonna be a really active corner. I see a lot of, I see a lot of hot rods hanging out in the summertime, so I hope you got a lot of ice cream. Those guys like ice cream.
We'll, we'll definitely have you.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
New business. Item six. Approval of site plan for proposed conversion of a vacant church into a condominium development located at three-one-four-six-three Ann Arbor Trail, southwest corner of Ann Arbor Trail in Merriman. This is planning department number one-three-one-five-A. Planning commission recommends approval of the proposed site plan with the condition that a dumpster is added to the northeast corner of the site.
So, motion by Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. The subject property here is located at the southwest corner of Ann Arbor Trail in Merriman. Uh, the property is currently zoned GAR. That's our Garden Apartment Residential District, and is currently developed with a vacant church building that's also been vacant for at least a few years. Uh, the petitioner's proposing a, uh, two-part project in two phases. Phase one, uh, is to repurpose the existing church building, uh, into thirty apartment units, uh, that will include the construction of a second story, uh, to the church, or, I'm sorry, second floor. Phase two proposes construction of a six, of six buildings around the perimeter of the property that contain a total of, uh, thirty-four condo units. Uh, so, again, the first phase is, uh, second story addition to the existing church and, uh, thirty apartment units that will be leased out, uh, in the existing church, and then, uh, a variety of buildings will be constructed around the perimeter of the site, uh, shown on this site plan that will, uh, be made up of a condominium development, uh, thirty-four units. Uh, the applicant, the applicant is requesting site plan approval for both phases, uh, of this project tonight. Uh, the site will utilize one driveway, uh, at Ann Arbor Trail, uh, in the northwest corner of the site where my cursor is located. Uh, the proposed parking complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the petitioner proposes street-side landscaping in compliance with the zoning ordinance along Ann Arbor Trail, and the small portion of Merriman over here, which is a part of the property and requires landscaping. Uh, there's two dumpster enclosures proposed to be built, uh, in these two locations over here, uh, in the south of the site. Um, they wanted to keep the dumpsters away from the front of the site. However, the planning commission is requiring a dumpster be provided as a condition in this location here. I've been working with the architect and engineer of these plans, and, uh, they are in development with complying with that rec, with that requirement. Uh, the development will contain a stormwater system in accordance with Wayne County requirements. You can kind of see these, uh, rain gardens spread out throughout the site, uh, where my cursor is, along the Ann Arbor Trail frontage and the south of the site here. Uh, there's a variety of, uh, bulk requirements and, uh, size dimensional standards that I've placed in your packet, uh, for reference. If you'd like, I can go into a little bit more detail. Uh, but the administration and planning commission is recommending, uh, approval tonight. Uh, the project engineer is in the hospital, but the developer is in the audience today, so I'd be happy to answer any questions related to the site plan that I can on behalf of the, uh, project engineer. Thanks.
Thank you. Developers here? Please.
How you guys doing?
Good. What can you tell us that Mo hasn't told us?
My name is Fadi Salmi, the owner of the property.
Very good. Very.
[laughing]
I was, I was seeing you forget to try and sell it a little bit. I don't know. So, um, well, I tell you what, I'll go ahead and turn to the council. Is there any, uh, questions from the maker? Any from the supporter?
Yes, please.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Good evening. Thank you for joining us, and, uh, I wish us for your friend that he's healthy and out of the hospital soon.
Thank you.
Through the chair to Mo. Uh, you know, we had a previous new development down, uh, further down, uh, west, uh, Ann Arbor Trail, and there was- Trail, and there was the installation of a traffic light at one point, and then it was removed. Do you remember that? Yes, okay. So, you know, we've had some, or at least I personally have had, been contacted by residents of the existing subdivision that are kinda disappointed that that light has been removed. I'm just curious how the traffic study for the increase in homes on this corner has, has shown, or if there has been one, or if there will be one, and was there any consideration of reinstalling the traffic light further down Ann Arbor Trail to kind of lessen what this impact potentially could be?
I am aware of the removal of that traffic light for the Park Road development, the single-family development that went in place of the school. We, the zoning ordinance doesn't require a traffic study be, be developed or created for multifamily residential site. There's about 60 units here, so there could be some traffic generation, however, it's sporadic throughout the morning and probably later evenings. The roadways can definitely handle the traffic, whether a traffic light is warranted or not. I'm not sure, if, if a traffic light was to be put, I don't know, it would, it would probably be in this location, and there are MDOT standards that would not permit a traffic light to be located in this area because it is too close to the intersection, it's called trap.
I guess that's why I was asking and possibly requesting that we reinvestigate the reinstillation of the one further down Ann Arbor Trail. Love the development, I think it's beautiful.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Looking, looking forward to it, and I'm in support of it, I just do have a worry about the amount of traffic for the already existing homes, since there's already a little bit of congestion and, and a little chatter from some of the residents that they missed that light tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from the council? Any other comments? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you so much, guys, appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
New Business, item seven, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Sampe. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Now moving to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, board members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. The clock will not be stopped once it has started. Is there anyone on my right?
Richard Graham from Move Westland Forward. Regarding the Hawthorne Valley site, I guess I have to re-listen, but, you know, kinda concerned when I hear the word mercury mentioned. You know, mercury is a very, you know, a very hazardous material, so if there's mercury around that site, and there might not be remediation or containment of that other than taking down some bridges, those homeowners, whoever they might be, should probably be notified that there could be mercury in that area. So again, I'll re-watch that because, and see what the comment was, but I think I heard mercury. And that's, that's pretty bad stuff, especially if you have kids playing in that area, so we'll be interested to see how that proceeds. I read about Highland Park refusing to pay around $60 million for the Great Lakes, to the Great Lakes Water Authority, which will now be paid by other communities, which is really the taxpayers. These communities filed a protest, but it was, but it was stated by a Westland newspaper that, that Westland was not present for this meeting that was held in the city of Wayne. Why didn't Westland attend this meeting? Who is our representative? Wayne is right next door to Westland, so it's really not that far to travel. Sounds pretty bad when Westland was one of the only two communities that did not attend this critical meeting, at least according to the Westland Eagle, which may end up costing taxpayers $60 million. Through the chair, anybody that can answer, anybody that could answer that? Regarding, question regarding the housing development at Farmington Road in Joy. Residents have been asking Move Westland Forward about this location, and specifically how it is being marketed versus what it was approved, PUD for condos. It appears the site plan was approved for condos, and there, and there was rezoning involved, I think. However, designed by the builder state, these are apartments. Their website lists similar developments in other cities as apartments with a monthly rental due. Residents in the area are concerned, so through the chairs, so to anybody on council and administration that knows anything about this, what was listed as a condo now becoming apartments, so, and then also who is the builder of that? Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
My name is Kevin Walden, I wanna know about city inspections from apartments you do every two years, and you get HUD inspections, and how long is that gonna continue happening? My property manager, he wanted me to bring it up, he can't be here, so. And then the, selling the sidewalks and the businesses too, Hickory Green ticket from them not shoveling, and then I see other areas where some of the sidewalks aren't shoveled at, at all, so I don't know why that happens. And then these people, they've heard that they're, "For the disabled when they're not." I'm disabled, now he's laughing at me, so.
Sir, what was the development you spoke of, the apartments?
Hickory Green.
Hickory Green, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll try and get something for you after the meeting here.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is there anyone on my right?
Everybody, somebody, it's important to me, anyway. Anyway, Ray here, and I see you have on the agenda for the autism adoption. Well, I'm working on it for the Disability Concern Board, I started on it today, and my next meeting, some people on there already talked about it, and they agree with me, so I can let the council know that it's important to me. We do everything else on this type of stuff, I wanna make sure the disability awareness is also included, that's all I'm asking for, I'm not asking for a whole lot. This is my passion, I put my heart and soul into this, and I want, and hopefully that, you know, I listen to everybody, everything else, like, we have Disability Awareness Month, Autism Month, and don't forget Mental Health Month. Mental Health Month is another one you're gonna hear me talking about, how mental health is very important too, we don't put that underneath the rug, 'cause, you know, mental health these days have been really big, and so, me as an ambassador, I'm going to be talking about it. And matter of fact, today, with the fire department in Westland, and Mike, I am going to be doing that training, so I did talk to him about it, so I got like three trainings with him, I'm looking, definitely looking forward, and I'm getting my list ready, and it's important to me. I also spoke at School Craft, as a matter of fact, and two police officers from Westland was there, had different cities, state and all, counties. They had a person from the recovery side and a person with a disability. And of course, I am proud what I do, and it's a walkaway when I talk, and matter of fact, they're planning having me coming back to it, so, I was just, just taking some notes here, so that's one of the key things I saw here tonight, so. People telling me in this, where I go and stuff, I'm doing a great job and keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? All right, we'll close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Council President, just a couple of quick announcements. I'm gonna talk about the Dog Vaccination Clinic that will be held on Saturday, April 2nd, from 9:30 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the Wayne Ford Civic League. The dog vaccinations are for only, they're only $20, and they include rabies, distemper, and Pravox. Dog microchips for only $10. On-site Westland dog licenses for $12, $6 if they are sprayed and neutered. This event is free to Westland veterans, veteran ID required. The event is limited to the first 250 dogs. And two other quick things, we just, earlier today before the council meeting, we had a swearing-in of some promotions in the police department and some new police officers, so it was nice to see two of our officers get promoted to the rank of sergeant, and four new officers being sworn in as police officers in the city of Westland, so, nice job on the swearing-in chief earlier today. And just wanted to congratulate the recipients of our compassionate city awards, Nicholas Collins, Brianna Robb, and Justine Peterson, who I believe was in the Fire Academy at the, at the, for her recip, of that reward, so you should keep an eye on her, chief, when she gets a little bit older. That's all tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Thank you, Council President, no.
You're welcome, Mr. Attorney. Thank you. All right, we'll begin council comments tonight with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I too also want to congratulate all the new hires and all those who got promoted in our police department this evening. Looking forward to see the continued growth in our department, and it was mentioned that a lot of the new hires that we're getting lately are from Westland, they grew up in Westland, or they're from the immediate area, so keep up the good work, and I hope that we can keep hiring good candidates, it was a problem for a number of years, so we're working to, to get that back on track, so that's it for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. I just wanted to congratulate Justine, Nick, and Brianna, the three recipients of the Random Acts of Kindness Award. You know, it's, it's great to see the, you know, the young people being recognized by teachers, by the administrators, for, for doing what we, we would hope every kid would do, but, you know, some kids go above and beyond, and these three were shining examples of that. And that's all I have this evening, thanks.
Next we have Councilwoman Rukowski.
We're playing like council comment roulette tonight, huh? Okay.
Keep your eye on the table.
Good evening, everyone. I too want to share my inspiration from those young people, Justine, Nicholas, and Brianna. We had our high schoolers and our technical students recognized today, and they're being recognized by their peers and their teachers and their administrators, so it's not just our little, little ones, it's our, our young people, our, our young, almost young adults, so keep up the good work, continue to be an inspiration to those around you, and spread kindness. I'd also like to congratulate the promotions of our two sergeants, as well as welcome our four new officers. And lastly, I wanted to share something that I think is pretty impactful for our city, and as you know, I sit on the Ninkan Transit Commission, and the commissioners of the Transit Commission, which cover five cities, so it's us here in Westland, Wayne, Inkster, Canton, and Garden City, we selected to use some of our CARES Act money, in fact, we chose $20,000 of our CARES Act money to help subsidize our partner cities in providing fairs. So, Westland was awarded 3,000 fairs, and we'll be working with the administration about how to best utilize those, and for those who don't know exactly what Ninkan Transit does, it is a transportation that's available for our senior population, as well as some of our disabled persons, so that they can go do errands or go to the doctor's appointments and things of that nature, so I'm really happy to see that, you know, that CARES money is coming right back to us as well, and we'll have some more information about how if you need assistance with your transportation costs, because it is $3 each way. So, you know, if you are a senior citizen that is utilizing, or a disabled person that's utilizing it, it could cost you up to $6 to get to your doctor's appointment. So this gives us an opportunity, it's very advantageous for us to be able to help subsidize some of that cost, make sure people are being taken care of. So that's all I have to share this evening, I hope you have a great night, and we'll see you in April.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe.
All right, well, good evening. So we've had a jam-packed day as a council, we started out at 5:30 with the swearing-in, and then we went right into a study session, and I think days like this and the long days, it just kind of glorifies and gets us all excited with just what we do here, so we had, again, a really great day, and I wanted to congratulate the new hires and the promotions of our veteran police officers. I wanted to congratulate Cham Kozak and Thomas Lawson, and welcome our new officers, Jacob Berkowitz, Casey York, Chelsea Gilbert, and Nicholas Edney. So it was really great to see their families out and supporting them, and I was very happy that we were able to be a part of the ceremony. So I know that Ray brought this up, March is Disabilities Awareness Month, which is something I'm passionate about too, but tonight I wanted to thank my colleagues for in supporting me for passing the resolution proclaiming that Autism Awareness Month be recognized in the city of Westland as April. For those that don't know, my, my only sibling and my brother, he's got low-functioning autism, and I really have experienced firsthand a lot of havoc that it causes on a family. My brother just turned 38, he's never gonna drive a car, never live on his own, never have a family, his mentality is literally like a five-year-old, so, you know, he's got a heart of gold, and he accepts everybody, he accepts everybody. So, you know, many families here in Westland deal with the struggles and the hardships, insurance doesn't actually cover a lot of the treatments that are needed, so seeing my mom fight for acceptance and keep, keeping an autism-based school open, railing and lancing just for that, I wanted just to thank the administration for allowing me to bring this forward. I know that we're planning to light the city blue for Autism Awareness Month, and I would encourage, you know, residents that support this to turn your light bulbs over to blue in support for Autism Awareness Month, and, you know, for those that have special needs families, we hear you and we are in support of you, so I just wanted to just bring that up and just say thank you very much for, you know, everyone's support here today, it was very meaningful to have that as a sibling of a brother who has autism. And also too, as a council, I know we've been keeping very busy, so we have a lot of study sessions coming up, we had, like I said, one tonight, we have two on Thursday and two on Monday. So we have a lot of different things coming up in addition to our, our study session that we invite people to come to for our budget, so I just wanted to plug that on April 9th and April 23rd at City Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It is open to the public, we definitely encourage residents to be there for public comments, so I wanted just to mention that. In addition to having Paul Matz speak earlier, but I am on the advisory council with Councilman Londo for the Youth Assistance Program, and Paul has just talked about mentoring, so if you are interested, please call, he didn't give his phone number, so I wanted to plug that. Paul Matz, the director, at 734-467-7904, and again, it's, it's just really great to get involved with these youth, and they always can use great mentors. So that's, that's pretty much it, I just wanted to put in one more plug for the Household Hazardous Waste Program. It's been posted, but I wanted to just remind people, it is Saturday, April 2nd, at Westland Shopping Center, right behind J.C. Penney's, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that's all I have this evening. I'll be posting like events and such on my personal Facebook page, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe, if you wanna check it out, but otherwise, I'll see everyone in two weeks, everyone be kind and be safe with each other, bye-bye.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening. First off, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Sampe for bringing up that Autism Awareness Month for the month of April, I think that's really important to raise awareness of all disabilities, so thank you for that, and also thank you to my colleague, Councilwoman Rukowski, for her update on what we're doing to help subsidize some of the costs for our Ninkan Transit riders, that's really important as well, so thank you for that update. I want to thank and congratulate our two promotees, promote, promoted officers tonight, I'm trying to make up a word there, Sergeant Kozak and Sergeant Lawson on their promotions, and then also welcome and congratulate Officers Berkowitz, Edney, Gilbert, and York to the Westland Police Department. Thank you for stepping up and answering the call to serve and sacrifice for our community here in Westland. I know several of these individuals are members of the Westland community as well, so they're serving and protecting their own community that they live in, so thank you to the two officers who- own community that they live in. So thank you to the two officers who are newly promoted to sergeant, and then to four new officers that we've brought on board here in the city of Westland. I want to thank the three individuals, our high school students, for their compassionate and kind acts. That would be Justine Pearson, Nicholas Collins, and Brianna Robb. Thank you, even before you got acknowledged. We're doing these acts of kindness, I'm sure, all year in the school, so thank you for doing that. We really appreciate it, and I know that your classmates and the staff there at John Glenn really appreciate that, these acts of kindness as well. I wanted to thank Joanne Campbell and her team. I see Joanne's left, but the community development team for all the work that they do year-round. It was a great study session that we all took part in tonight, and really, the work they do over at Jefferson Barnes and is a part of our broader CDBG program is critically important to people here in the community. And, you know, Joanne's one of the less visible department heads. We don't always get to see or hear from her at meetings, but the work that her and her team are doing is really second to none, and we're really lucky and fortunate to have her. So just wanted to, you know, thank Joanne and the administration for all the work that they put in on the CDBG. Also want to thank Paul Mott and his team. I know Paul came up and spoke tonight about the mentorship program that we're doing here in the city of Westland. It's great to know that, you know, two of my colleagues, Councilman Londo and Councilwoman Sampe, are participating in that program on the board. And, you know, as Councilwoman Sampe mentioned, and as Paul mentioned earlier, give them a call at 734-467-7904 if you are interested in becoming a mentor for one of the kids in that program. It's an invaluable service, I think, that Paul and his entire team do for the community. And then wanted to highlight the fact that tonight we purchased an F-150 Lightning. So that is a plug-in electric, all-electric F-150 pickup truck. I think that's great that here as a city, we're really committing to our Mission Green name and looking to become a more renewable, sustainable community. I think we can do more to build on that, though. As many of you know, we've gotten money from the federal government, $26 million in terms of funding for the American Rescue Plan, and I'd really like to see us focus on a piece of solar energy and renewable energy, whether that's, you know, here at City Hall, or working in partnership with DTE for, you know, the airport property, the airport park, to potentially do a solar field. So as we get into debating more of how we want to, you know, spend that $26 million that we've got here in the community, I think a big piece around renewable energy and sustainability would be really important, and I think purchasing a F-150 Lightning is step one in many things that we can do. Just a couple of other things tonight. It was brought up in terms of, you know, mental health as well. Ray, again, thank you for all the work that you do. You know, I would advise anyone to pay attention to this year's budget here in the state of Michigan. There has been some pretty significant increases to mental health funding, one of which affects us here in Westland due to the facility that we have over there on Merriman. I know that the governor and leaders in Lansing are looking to potentially increase beds for patients and increase services in schools as well in terms of mental health. So it's critically important that when we send a child to school, that we're not just focusing on their academic performance, but that we're focusing on their mental well-being as well, and any brain health issues that they have. There's a lot of stress on kids, especially with the pandemic, and kids having to go to school and then go back home, virtual learning, wearing masks. All that has created a lot of stress for kids in school, and I think it's critically important that we acknowledge that and acknowledge the stress that's put on them. And it's great to see that we're getting some action on mental health here to increase funding and support for that. Just wanted to give a shout-out again to Cody Bailey and his team over at Legendary Acts. If you've noticed, they have had their grand opening just last week, so it's really exciting to have that type of business here in the city of Westland. We need more destination attractions, and, you know, Cody's already provided one of those with Hush, and now we've got another attraction over at the same Hush Haunt site there on Cherry Hill, and that is the Legendary Acts that he and his team have opened up. So just want to give another shout-out for that, and thank you to Cody for his continued investment in our city. And last but not least, I just want to offer, you know, my continued thoughts and prayers, obviously for our, you know, US troops who are serving abroad, but, you know, thank you for all your service and sacrifice, but also for the Ukrainian people, people in Yemen, Palestine, Ethiopia, and Sudan, and North Korea, who are facing conflict and oppression as well. This is not just a Ukrainian crisis. We've seen in countries across the globe, again, Ethiopia, and Yemen, and Palestine, where people are facing strife and conflict as well. So my prayers, my thoughts certainly go out with them, with Ukrainian troops and people who are battling in Putin's immoral war, and to our American service members as well. And with that, I bid you all a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tem Londo?
Thanks, President Hart. Just a couple of things tonight. Nice agenda tonight. Nice to see, as already kind of mentioned from a few folks, the purchase of the 2022 Ford Lightning for the police department. I know those men and women are really, really excited to get that. They've been hounding me for a while. We budgeted for it back in April, May, passed it in July, so they've been pushing for that. So happy to see that get ordered. Councilwoman Sampe, thank you so much for the autism resolution. I know it's something you're really passionate about, you've been working on, and you were in our ear for a couple of months. I promise you, we get it on the agenda, and we're hoping to light up City Hall, not just for Autism Awareness Month, but for other events as well. So thank you for bringing that forward. Also, great to see, you know, another condo development coming to the city, a housing project over Hawthorne Valley, finally having that purchase. So a lot of exciting stuff. I know the administration's got some more exciting announcements coming down the line, so stay tuned to that. And then it was also mentioned, we swore in two veteran police officers with Cham Kozak and Thomas Lawson to the rank of sergeant. So congratulations to both of those fine officers. And we welcomed and swore in four new police officers, Jacob Berkowitz, Casey York, Chelsea Gilbert, and Nicholas Edney. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank Sergeant Burke Lang, who recently retired, making way for these promotions and these new hires. So thank you for his service to the community. And we're still a little bit short of our budgeted number. I know the chief's working really hard to get that eligibility list up. Tonight's presentation, or the swearing-in ceremony, exhausted that current eligibility list. So if anybody knows anybody that wants to be a officer, work for one of the best departments in the country and the state, make sure to have them get with the city clerk's office here at the city of Westland, and we'll get them all the information they need. Couple other quick things. A couple weeks ago, or last weekend, I went to a trivia event for the Westland Rotary Club. I know a few of my colleagues were there. It was a wonderful event. I want to thank the Rotary Club and everybody that attended, and I had a pretty good table. We did pretty well. I was excited to take third place, only for the host to say, "No, we got to combine both scores," so now you took seventh place over. But anyways, I want to thank Judge McConnell for inviting me and having us there. Couple more things. I keep saying that. The Westland Fire Prevention is assisting another small business in the community, so I want to thank the fire department, a company called Bishop Designs here in Westland. They didn't need assistance with their fire depression systems. They didn't need assistance with extinguishers or exercises. They needed manpower. Our Westland Fire Prevention, or Fire Marshal Division, stepped up, dedicating their own time to helping this organization this weekend. So while we were all enjoying the nice weather, they were sweating bullets over there at the Suburban Collection Showplace, helping them set up for their largest event of the year, which is the Lapari Food Show. So I want to thank the administration for those guys coming out and volunteering their time to work that event and help out a Westland small business. And then the neighborhood grant deadline is coming up in about 11 days, which is April 1st. We've gotten about six to 10 applications, so thank you to the clerk's office. They've done a great job of cataloging those for us, and I've been sending them to the committee that I'm on with Councilman Godbout and Councilwoman Rukowski. So we're looking through those, and we'll be having some announcements in the upcoming weeks on that. And then Councilwoman Sampe, or excuse me, Sampe, Rukowski, thank you so much for the update on Ninkan Transit. I know you always send one to the council leadership and the administration. That's great news to know about the assistance with the rider fare. So thank you so much for that. And let me just take one last look at my notes here. That's all I got. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking Councilwoman Rukowski for leading us to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to welcome our four new officers, as well as, again, congratulate our two officers that again promoted to sergeant. I know that's a big step in your career, putting those stripes on your sleeve. So I know it's a great deal, means a great deal, a great deal to them, and I can't think of two better officers that go ahead and got promoted. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening, and I'd like to thank everyone for all their input. Is there a motion to adjourn?